Right into amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments tonight? I see none disclosure monetary interest, Councilor Dwyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do have a disclosure. It is a item. Oh, I've closed my agenda. It is the Community Improvement Plan, which I believe is item three on priority items. Is that correct? Three or four?
Eight point one, I believe.
Eight point one. Thank you very much.
There we go. All right, so no other disclosures monetary interest. We'll move into our delegation. We've got Mr. Scott Reed with us tonight, who is going to talk to us about federal election boundary adjustments. Welcome, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. Thanks. And again, I offered my apologies to Nadine earlier. I'll do it for everybody else here. I did not realize when I tuned in during the first part of the meeting that my microphone was on and I inadvertently interrupted. So please accept my apologies. I'm here to talk tonight about the riding boundaries readjustment process and what it means for Smiths Falls. And I'll just give you a little bit of background information first, and then we can go into the meat of what I wanted to suggest. Every 10 years, following the census, the census takes place near ending in one, so here 2001, 2011, 2021. Following that, a boundaries commission is established for every province and its job is to change the boundaries of the writings in the province. Sometimes there's some new problems, new writings added in for the province as well. So that the populations of all of the writings are roughly equal. What happens over time is as new housing developments are built and so on, some of the writings wind up having more population than others. And that means that votes are no longer weighted equally. So it's a standard thing. It happens every, every 10 years. The commission is struck in the autumn of the year ending in one. So last October, last year, the Commission for Ontario and one for every other province was struck. And the, each of the commissions then issues a report for its province, an initial report containing its initial proposals, typically in the spring or summer of the, of the year ending in two. So in this case, in 2022, the Ontario Boundaries Commission issued its initial proposals at the end of August, which made it several months later than all of the other commissions. It has, in all fairness to the Ontario Commission, the hardest job. It's easy to redistribute the four writings in P E I. Doing it with 130 odd writings in Ontario is genuinely a challenge. And having issued its initial report, it then solicits feedback. They gave an extraordinarily short feedback period in Ontario, wrapping up in September. And then unexpectedly, on the last day of September, they extended it. So they will now accept feedback as late as October 29th. And I am today talking to you about feedback that Smiths Falls Council might want to make. So based on the feedback that it gets, the commission issues a new report adjusting the boundaries between writings from what they initially proposed. And usually the boundaries commission is quite receptive to reasonable proposals and will quite often make changes that cause the final proposals to be dramatically different than what they initially proposed. And we've seen that if you look at, I've been around for two redistributions so far. And the initial proposal in both cases bore no resemblance to the final boundaries that were drawn. As they consider the proposals that are made to change from what they initially proposed, they do insist that the numbers are king. The writings have to be fairly close in population to each other. But they take very seriously the idea of communities of interest, that people who share common values or common history or heritage ought to be kept united in the same constituency. Now, it's my belief that the process of accepting feedback and considering alternatives will create a situation in which Smiths Falls, which has for many years been attached to the same writing as Lanark County, put in a position where it could find itself being attached instead to Leeds and Grenville and not to Lanark County. I have my own views on the subject, and you can probably guess that I would like, speaking personally, to continue being in a position to have, to represent Smiths Falls. But that's not the point here. The point is that your input indicating where your feelings are might cause you to be placed either with Lanark or with Leeds and Grenville. And with that in mind, I've submitted to Nadine two potential motions you might want to consider submitting to the boundaries commission. They say opposite things. The first motion says, I can just read this. Whereas the boundaries of federal electoral districts are redrawn every 10 years, and whereas it's possible that the federal electoral boundaries commission may consider causing the town of Smiths Falls to be attached to the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville, rather than as at present to Lanark County. And whereas Smiths Falls maintains closer institutional links to Lanark County than to the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville, now therefore the town of Smiths Falls requests that in the redistribution, it remains attached to Lanark County. The second motion says the opposite and ends with, now therefore the town of Smiths Falls requests that in the redistribution, it not remain in Lanark County, but be attached to the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville. And I suspect if you choose one of those two, your input will be determinative and will cause the boundaries commission to take your advice. So having said all of that, I wonder if I could now take you through the slideshow of what I'm going to be presenting to the boundaries commission a bit later this month. Nadine, would I be able to get the slideshow back? We can skip page one and go directly to page two. Everybody was sent a copy of this, by the way, so you can take a look at it at your leisure if you want. So page two, the problem facing the commission. It looks like that page got folded over. But I'll just tell you what it says. The problem facing the commission for writing to the population range of 18.9%. So the four writings that are being looked at here, you can count, there's actually six writings that are shown in pink, but I'm making a proposal that makes an adjustment to just the four. So Remfrew, Nipissing Pembroke, which is the one furthest to the north, Lanark, Frontenac, Kingston, which is the writing area present, and that's the one shaped like an upside down L, Leeds and Grenville, which is the rectangle to the south, and finally, Kingston and the Islands. So those four writings, I want you to take a look at this to get an idea of what they look like right now. So the boundaries commission facing these quite considerable population differences between Leeds and Grenville, which is 10.7% below the median population of the province, Kingston and the Islands, which is at this point 8.16% above the median population, said we have to change something. And so they proposed what's on the next slide. This is their initial proposal. And if you are looking at the writing that we're in, it's now kind of shaped like a large circle, a somewhat jagged circle. And to the south of us, the Leeds and Grenville writing, which they've renamed as Ganonakway Brockville Prescott, now kind of looks like a very flattened letter U. And what's happened here is that the boundaries commission has done the following things to maintain roughly rough population parity. They've taken out of the Leeds and Grenville writing and given to the Lanark centered writing. They've given Rideau Lakes Township, they've given Merrickville Wolford, Westport, and also the half of the township of Elizabeth Town Kitleys. They've taken the Kitley part and attached it to, to that writing. On the other hand, they've done an exchange in the opposite direction to the west. So we were an upside down L before. Well, the bottom part of that L was the northern part of the city of Kingston, everything in the city of Kingston, north of Highway 401. And also South Frontenac. And again, they've drawn the boundary in order to get the right population numbers. They've drawn the boundary so that the township of South Frontenac is sliced and part of it is in one writing and part is in another. Finally, they have added to the north of this writing the township of Madawaska, or Greater Madawaska, which was, is in Remfrew County and currently is in the Remfrew, Nipissing Pembroke writing. So the result is the population difference shrinks from 18 and a half, almost 19% to 14%, which is in line with the kind of goals they're doing, but it's not in line very impressively. And so it seems to me it's reasonable. One can go back and argue to the commission, you can get closer to your own goal of having these writings more closely, closer in population to each other. And also you can greatly improve community of interest. You can imagine when the folks in Elizabeth Town Kitley saw that their township was being sliced in half, they weren't very happy, with good reason. And they've submitted a resolution of the Township Council to the boundaries commission saying, please put us our entire township in one writing, which seems like a reasonable thing to request and a clear community of interest. In South Frontenac, likewise, they aren't very happy about it and they would like to all be in within the boundaries of one township or one, one writing. The mayor of Madawaska, Greater Madawaska, actually came to my office to talk to me, even though he's not my constituent. And he said, you know, don't take offense at this, but I would like my township to stay with the rest of Remfrew County. We have a community of interest with the rest of Remfrew County. Can you try and just make that happen? And at first I thought it's not really possible, but in looking at the populations of the writings and natural boundaries, I realized there is a way to bring the populations closer to the median and also to achieve better communities interest where you are not splitting townships from the county in which they, which they're located and with which they have a community of interest and you're not in the case of two townships actually slicing them in half. And that's the next proposal. So Nadine, can I ask you to go to page four? So here you can tell the map's a little different because this, the other ones I was taking directly, I cutting and pasting them out of the boundaries commission's report. Now, this is one that I've actually designed myself. And this map, if you look at it, is almost identical to the status quo. What's happened here is that I have suggested we take the township of Greater Madawaska, put it back into Remfrew County. I've suggested that we take the northern part of Kingston and also South Frontenac and put all of it back in Lanark County. And that Leeds and Grenville is also reconstituted, which creates all the same population problems there were before. But if you look carefully, you'll see that the boundaries commission had already added a chunk of West Carlton. It's very hard to see. And I wish I had a pointer here, but if you look at that map, you can see that there's a gray rectangle. That's the city of Ottawa. And to the north of that, to the northwest of that is a triangular chunk of territory. That's attached to Remfrew. And that gives them enough population that they are okay. Excuse me. And in the case of the Lanark-Frontenac-Kingston writing, they've given a chunk of West Carlton as well. It's a little part that sticks out of the city of Ottawa. So its population is okay. Leeds and Grenville is substantially below the average population and Kingston and the Islands is substantially above. So the solution is to take a chunk of Kingston and the Islands, the part that is east of the Catarochque River and south of Highway 401 and attach that to Leeds and Grenville. And the result is that the population variance shrinks from the 14% proposed by the commission down to 7.38%. And Nadine, can we just go to the next slide? So on population, it's much better. And in terms of community of interest, I think it's better. Now, what's going on here is that to do this, you transfer this area, this is a chunk of the city of Kingston here. And if you know your Kingston geography, the Catarochque River goes right through the middle of the city of Kingston. The Catarochque River is the blue patches, it and its associated lakes that are on the left to the west on this map. The south is the St. Lawrence River, including several islands, Wolf Island and Howe Island. And this chunk of territory, south of Highway 401, east of the Catarochque, north of the St. Lawrence, is transferred to Leeds and Grenville. And it has a population of just under 14,000. So the result is that that brings up Leeds and Grenville's population to just a little above the provincial median. And Kingston, which is way, way above right now, the provincial median is brought down so that it's slightly below the provincial median, but the two are much closer together. That's why we achieved those numbers. So that is one possible way of resolving the population problem and achieving the other goals that I was drawing your attention to. There is another way of doing this. And if you go to the next page, alternative proposal number two, you could do this. You'll recognize there's two maps now. The top map is Kingston again, but instead of attaching that territory to Leeds and Grenville, it gets attached to Lanark-Frontenac-Kingston. And then the other thing that is done, the bottom map, you all recognize the very distinctive municipal boundaries of Smiths Falls. Smiths Falls is attached to Leeds and Grenville instead of being attached to Lanark-Frontenac-Kingston. The population of Smiths Falls is somewhat smaller by about 4,000 than the population of the area of Kingston. And the numbers don't work out quite as well from an equity point of view. But it may be the case that from your perspective, this works out more accurately representing where you want to go. I'm pretty sure if you endorse the idea of being attached to Leeds and Grenville, the commission will accept this proposal. And if you endorse the idea of being attached to Lanark, the commission will accept the other proposal. And so you have the ability to make this choice for yourself. I probably should stop here and see if there's any questions about this.
Councilor McKenna.
Thanks very much, Scott. And this has been on my mind for, since the draft report came out. And I've spoken to at least a couple of the municipality leaders south of Smiths Falls, so in the Leeds-Grenville writing.
Right.
They, they are rubbing their hands together and they want Smiths Falls and they are gone. They've already been to the commission with their advice. So it would be important for Smiths Falls to have an opinion on this. Because, well, our location is we straddle all these, these two writings and
Right.
Every, it's nice to be wanted, but I, I think it is important for us to have our own, our own voice on this matter. And, you know, with some thought, I would suggest that we, as much as possible, stay within Lanark County and not go south to the Leeds-Grenville, Thousand Islands and the big long one. So that's just my thought. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilor McKenna. I think if we're, we'll move this to a committee item to discuss it. But if we have questions for Mr. Reed, now would be the time, Councilor Dwyer, then Councilor Brennan.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, my question was more procedural. And thank you, Mr. Reed, for, for coming to present because I think it, it gave us a good summary of considerations before we, we really debated. But procedurally, I mean, I'm assuming this will come back as a priority item. I would like to think that we'll have a staff report that accompanies it. But I'm also cognizant of the fact that you're very quickly running out of meetings. So Nadine, has, has administration discussed kind of when this would be coming back?
No, we haven't. I'll be honest with you. Malcolm requested that this be added to the agenda tonight. However, I did mention to the chair that there will be a special committee, the whole and council meeting on the 17th. So if the direction tonight is that staff return with a report on the 17th, we could certainly do that. And if a motion is required, it could be passed the same night if council so wishes.
Mr. Reed, when would the feedback need to get into the commission for, just for a reference?
Well, the 29th is the date they've indicated as their deadline. They take, I mean, they, they do have meetings where you can make an oral presentation, but there, you get five minutes. It's very hard to say anything coherent. So a written presentation is the best way to go. I would suggest sending it in one day early at the latest. And actually, I'd also appreciate if you could get back to me prior to that. I'll be making a presentation, my written presentation. I'm submitting that on the 26th. So if there's any way of letting me know so that I can make some kind of indication as to what you've decided, that would be very helpful to me.
Okay, great. So our next meeting is the 17th. It doesn't sound like there's any need to rush it through specifically tonight, but if there's consensus, we can do it on the 17th and it gives everybody lots of time. Councilor Brennan.
Yeah, thanks for this, Scott. I mean, it is sort of rushed and stuff and this happens every, every, every census and you know, we just, I talked to you about this a couple of senators ago. I was really surprised at the, of the deadline. I did have a question just through your presentation, Scott. Are we taking in with, with, are we taking in part of West Carlton as well?
Yes. Yeah. So if you, the way to imagine this is the amount, the territory, it's very hard to see on this little map. But the eastern boundary of Lanark County, the boundary between Lanark and the city of Ottawa runs just west of Highway 417, when it kind of goes from Ottawa or Kanata up to, to Armbridge. It's a long slender slice of territory. And that slice or, you know, strip, I guess you could say, is added to the writing. And that's actually, it's, it's actually very important to the boundaries commission's proposal in that Lanark-Frontenac is the smallest writing in population terms, south of Lake Nipissing. So of all 100 odd writings, it's the least populous one. And they were obviously desperate to find territory anywhere they could to stuff into it. That's why Kitleys in there. That's why Greater Madawaska is there. And that's also why that chunk of West Carlton is there.
Yeah. So it'll be like Fitzpatrick Harbor, that type of thing?
No, not Fitzpatrick Harbor. Fitzpatrick Harbor is east of the, of the force or east or north of the 417. So the greater share of West Carlton actually goes into the Algoma, Remfrew, they're calling it now, essentially the Remfrew writing.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, and, and Highway 417 becomes the dividing line between that part of Remfrew and the Lanark-Frontenac writing.
Yeah. So they're part of Ottawa, but I mean, I mean, for me, I think, you know, communities of interest. We are, have a seat at, at the county council in terms of community services and economic development. So it really makes sense for us to stay where we are. And, you know, hopefully my colleagues will agree. And I think the best way to go forward would be the next meeting when we discuss this is to get a formal motion together for you to take to the commission. So that would be my hope.
That would be ideal. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilor Brennan. Any last questions, comments for Mr. Reed? So I'm seeing a consensus. We can add this to our next agenda on October 17th. And we've got two draft motions that we can review in the meantime. So thank you very much for joining us tonight. It's not every meeting that we get to have our MP with us. So thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Good night.
Night.
So with that, we don't have any adoption of minutes and we don't have a CIO with us tonight. Do we have any director's reports? Deputy Clerk Brennan?
There is one with Director McMann. There he is.
Great. Director McMann?
Yeah, sorry, Nadine. And thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just waiting for my camera to come on. Yeah, so I do have one this evening. It's with respect to just a little bit of an update on Beckwood Street generally, but more specifically to the use of the town hall parking lot. So as we know, municipal elections are right around the corner. And then the clerk's office has been working hard the last, well, last number of weeks and especially this, this, this week and next, with folks coming in to, to register for their voting cards and whatnot. So I'd like, I'm pleased to advise that the currently right now, the back parking lot has received its first course of asphalt, being the base course. So it is available for people that are visiting town hall for this week to park there. Staff are currently parking over at the, the church on Elm Street, just down the way from us. And will continue to do so until the election is over. Attendees may access the, the parking lot from Elm Street and or Church Street, just as they always have before. And please note that the Church Street is closed, obviously, once you hit Beckwood, because Beckwood is still completing as, as we know, it, it needs to receive surface course asphalt as well and line painting. They've been working hard at some minor landscaping works over the last week, week and a half or so. Yeah. So visitors to town hall can either use the entrance on Church Street. So that would be the side entrance and/or of course, the main lobby entrance off of Beckwood Street. So those would be pedestrians coming into the site. As I noted earlier, that the we do need to get surface course asphalt on the back parking lot. And right now that is tentatively scheduled for this Thursday. However, looking at the long range forecast for the rest of the week, it's looking like rain Thursday, Friday. So that could, could dampen those efforts, no pun intended. If that's the case, everything just slides a little bit. So there is a chance perhaps if it does rain towards the latter part of this week, that they could come in Saturday to pave the parking lot. Yeah. So it's anticipated that, you know, if the planets align here and we don't get rain, that the parking lot will be available to all following, following the, the efforts at the end of this week. And I think that's it. Did I miss anything, Nadine, that you wanted to touch on? Anything else?
No, I think, I think that's it. Just that there is the accessible parking space on Church Street that's available as well. But I think, I think you've covered everything.
Yeah. So we're, we're doing our best trying to, trying to get things finished up with, with Beckwood and the parking lot. Yeah, recognizing that we do have municipal elections. So it's a little bit of a juggling match right now, but hopefully everything comes together. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Director McMann. Councilor McKenna.
Thanks very much, Director McMann. I did have a question. You're, I just want to confirm that both entries are going to be open into the, the May on, off of Beckwood and off Church at the same time, because that's a new new news to me. So that's, that's great. Is that what's being planned?
Yeah. So through the chair, there's a, there's the entrance that we always had off of Church Street. So it is currently open as is the direct access and egress out to Elm Street. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much, Director McMann. So with that, we'll move into eight point one, Community Improvement Plan update with Senior Planner Grantie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This report is brought forward for council's direction on the next steps of the C I P approval. The report summarizes the purpose and intent of each of the programs being proposed. However, that was covered in very thorough detail during the presentations. Well, I'll keep this very brief. I'd like to express my appreciation to the planners at Dillon for their work, their expertise and advice, as well as for business owners, stakeholders, members of the public who participated and provided feedback in the process. As a general note, council will see the draft C I P is comprehensive in its scope and coverage, however, is intended to build in the flexibility for council and future councils to scope and prioritize what funding programs they'd like to pursue, fund and promote in a given year, and also give us the operational flexibility. As such, the policy has the ability to evolve over its projected 10-year period in order to evolve with the needs of the community. Council is now in position to cover or to consider adopting the C I P as presented or subject to any modifications that council may direct. And we welcome council's discussion and feedback following the, the public meeting. Our consultants are also on hand to respond to any questions. And I will certainly likely be directing questions to, to them as well. And I'll pause here and look forward to, to council's discussion.
Great. Thanks, Carl. Councilor Brennan, is that your hand?
Yeah, I was just trying to raise it on the screen there. So I appreciate the presentation we received and the limited feedback we got. But overall, I think this has been a long time coming. And thank you, Rory, for all your work on it. And some of the points that I had marked off, the brownfield revitalization, I think that's, that's a positive. I think it's, it's presenting some carrots to people to, to revitalize this type of land. And, and actually it will create revenue for us with a little bit of, with a little bit of money out the door, but more in the door. I really like the idea of universal accessibility for the C I P and, and many of the programs covering the, the whole municipality. That's always been a comment that I've always received. And again, with the affordable housing component that you presented to us, again, it's, it's more carrots to encourage developers to, to provide that sort of thing, not a hammer. And a couple of, one question I had was, I know we're, we're talking about accessibility and, and we always hear this, this, this year, 2025 coming down, it's going to be a hammer to everybody. And it, it, do you think, or in your opinion, do you think that would be changed? Or would it be like, if, if we're taking positive steps toward that, is 2025 a hard and fast year?
Through to, through the chair to the counselor, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, you know, how the, the province may navigate towards that next horizon. I can simply offer her historical perspective that long before we saw the emergence of the A O D A, I can tell you that the, the team at Dillon Consulting did an actual special study for the province way back in the early 2000s. Um, I can tell you that, uh, the, the team at Dillon Consulting did an actual special study for the province way back in, um, the early two thousands, uh, testing the, um, realities of a fairly rigorous, uh, accessibility requirement and what that would mean if, um, you know, simply for municipal buildings, uh, all the renovations that will be required. So we, we ran a series of case studies, scenarios, um, and, and looked at the inherent costs of that and, and how long it would take to actually make the transformation. Um, so again, I, I don't know, but I, I do know that it, uh, it, it has been, um, a fairly long time coming and, and you know, it's, it's, I think, trying to be phased in, uh, you know, step by step.
Yeah. I, I, I realize it's been a long runway, but, uh, realities are what they are. And, um, so I think that, you know, making positive steps are good, uh, a good signal to the province. The other, the only other one comment I would make, and, and thank you for the, uh, Jennifer from the public for making it, is the budget and, and, uh, it's pretty far reaching, uh, programs that we have all very valid. But, uh, you know, at the end of the day, it's going to be up to the council today to decide what kind of budget we have. And, um, I think it, it oper- offers opportunity for, for, uh, everyone across the community to access. But it's going to be up to the council of the day to decide and allocate, uh, given our responsibilities for roads, sewers and all the rest of it. Uh, so, uh, but I think it gives a good blueprint and happy to support it. And thank you for your work. I know it's been a long time coming, Rory. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Council Brennan and Mayor Panko.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, is that me next or?
Yeah, sorry. Did I cut out there?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Um, as, as I mentioned, the public meeting, I, I'm really encouraged to see us get to this point. This is something that's been in the works as we know for a long time. And I think it is a very comprehensive, forward thinking, uh, re, I guess revitalization of our, of our C I P. Um, yeah, as Council Brennan says, it's, we're going to, the next council will have to decide how we fund it. And like we decided in twenty fifteen, I guess, until you fund a C I P, it, it doesn't really have much benefit. It's a matter of trying to, determine what we apply. And it's probably look for some best practices elsewhere. And, um, on the attainable housing, uh, I think we had, we've had a housing task force, housing advisory committee that worked for probably two and a half years, uh, towards potential solutions that we could, uh, help develop more attainable and affordable housing area community. And, and this was i- in my mind, probably next to partnering with, with not for profits, which, which we have, we've done, we've had some results here. This is the next frontier. This is the next opportunity to try and help ensure that, um, our citizens have a, have a home they can afford. And I, I like the additional resident residential unit instead of, um, I'm not sure. We know that from, uh, experience elsewhere, uh, limited dollar amounts tend not to result in a significant amount of, of uptake. So I'm a little bit, uh, concerned there for the $5,000 amount that it may not create the attention, but we can stack, I guess, number one and two. I've been shooting them three there. And there's always a possibility, of course, that the county, uh, does something similar, which might allow people to, uh, enhance people further. And final comment, uh, the universal accessibility and I, I, again, as I mentioned in the public meeting, I'm really pleased to see that included. Uh, we, we don't know yet what the province will do and, and whether they'll provide incentives or, or financial support for businesses to become compliant. But, the bottom line is, as I see it, uh, we have about a thousand people on the O D S B in our community. We have an aging population, many people with mobility needs. And we currently have barriers, especially in our downtown. So I, I would like to see if we have, I guess, consensus among, uh, committee tonight, that we, we make that, uh, one of the top priorities as well, uh, for year one of our, our new C I P.
Thanks, Mayor Panko. Um, I'm going to chime in with some questions and comments, uh, just because I didn't have a chance to speak in the, in the public meeting. Um, it's really great to see this, Rory. I appreciate it. It's been a long time coming and a team effort with staff and, and the volunteers and everybody coming together. Um, I think when I joined the C I P in twenty fifteen as a member of the public, it was a real dream. It was just, this is, this is so needed in Smith Falls and, and it was such a progressive policy for, um, for the town at that time. But a- as things were on, it really showed that the devil was in the details. And, um, I think it's no secret. Many members of the committee would say it's, it's been challenging in the last couple of years of trying to figure out when, the line is crossed that justifies spending taxpayer money on a private development. Um, I, I'm wondering first off, when, when do we have to go through a, a zoning amendment, the way we're doing right now to change a C I P? And, and when can we, what, what do we have the, what will the next council have the freedom to decide specifically with funding amounts and, uh, and how the programs, anything outside of turning them on and off?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the question. It's a very good one. Um, so, uh, the question I think is what, uh, what would we need to do if we, if, um, or what would be the trigger for having to go in to amend the C I P? So yes, there is a, a means to amend the C I P in the same way that, um, a municipality can amend a zoning ballot or amend an official plan. Um, uh, if you were going to amend the C I P, the, the reasons for doing so would be basically, uh, threefold. Um, number one, to change the, uh, eligibility area or criteria. So if you notice that there were some maps and we've constrained some things to some areas and other things have been broad. So that's wired into the policy. Um, so if you decided that something was too broad and you wanted to retract it or something, um, wasn't big enough, you wanted to make it bigger. That's the downtown waterfront. It's the only one that's a sub area, then you'd need to make an amendment to the C I P. Um, or other things related to the, uh, eligibility. Um, as you saw, for example, we have a, two programs related to facade. Uh, one is triggered for non heritage and the other one is triggered for heritage. And if you wanted to fully reconfigure those programs, um, and change the eligibility around heritage, you would have to amend the plan. So, and similarly, anything else where, the, um, eligibility, um, components are going to change. Um, the other thing that you would need to go into amend the C I P for is the thresholds and the funding. Um, that's established in policy. I think those are, um, calibrated within reason for now and into the foreseeable future. Um, but you know, should you find yourself in a particular circumstance where, you know, you do a relook at things and you decide, well, we're going to move this bar. Um, we're going to fund, uh, a seventy-five percent threshold to, for example, an, an $80,000 limit that would require, an amendment, because that is currently stated clearly in policy. Um, and then the last thing that you might need to do is, um, something totally new, uh, comes up in the next few years that we just didn't have a line of sight on. And you realize that you actually need to create a brand new program that you do not have whatsoever. Um, and so the creation of a new program, uh, would be something that could get amended into the C I P. And then you could then offer, um, a different suite, uh, of, um, incentives or, or, or again, like a retooling of an existing program. So those are the things I would necessitate, uh, an amendment. Um, but a, as you can see, otherwise there's, there's a huge amount of flexibility in the C I P to respond to the needs of the community year over year.
Great. That's really comprehensive answer. Um, I'm wondering, some of the numbers seem a little bit low, especially with the way prices are increasing. Um, I'm thinking of, uh, say the planning, uh, building permit planning fees are fifty percent reduction. Uh, the accessibility grants fifteen thousand. When we think about our town hall renovation, I think the ballpark on, on the ramp, we, we may have had to have put on was in a six figure, hundred thousand dollar range. Um, I'm not sure that those, that those ceilings as they exist are going to be effective. And if we have to go through a whole amendment to, to change that, would there be an advantage to increasing those numbers? And then being a bit more restrictive with how we hand out the money, but at least giving us that freedom at this point.
Uh, that, that's a very good question. It's one that we debate frequently during the course of a community improvement plan. Um, uh, it is my recommendation to this council that, uh, uh, we should try to move ourselves towards a year run, um, operas- operationalization of the plan in regards to your priority programs. Um, and use, because these, these are newer programs potentially that you're going to bring forward. Um, it's not like your facade where you, have some traction and a bit of kind of corporate knowledge, unique to your community, um, to operationalize yourselves into year one, uh, and use some of year one to then, um, set the, uh, the way forward. Um, also bear in mind that a lot of the, the, the projects are based on a fifty percent. Um, so for example, the exterior renovation, uh, if memory serves me correctly, it's, uh, essentially a $30,000 project, which is a very sizable renovation, for an exterior accessibility, uh, for an individual kind of homeowner or business still. And then they get half of that back. So $15,000. Um, you know, I, I, I think within that, uh, there's a great place to start. Um, and I also think, um, at the same time, that it, it walks the line of, uh, fiscal responsibility. So not over committing, the municipality to very large sums of money. Uh, and if, um, you are in a position of, you know, not being able to put out, you know, half a million dollars, as I'm sure you are, uh, having these reasonable amounts allows you to disperse, um, to potentially more applicants, uh, in those early years, which I think is very important. Um, helping to have a, an impact, a, a significant impact in the community. Um, so that, that's my advice for this evening.
Good. Thanks. I've got some, uh, program specific questions now. I'll start with brownfields. Um, I was wondering why, uh, the building permit planning fee reduction was only fifty percent? And if that needs to be funded by, uh, other money, or we can take that out of the, the building reserves?
Um, so, uh, the, the fees that you collect for building permit and, and, uh, planning application fees, um, they, uh, are intended to, to pay for the efforts of staff. So if you're rebating, some of that, uh, then, um, you essentially have to make up the difference. Uh, and so we've, we've set it at fifty percent. Again, um, you know, that number is fairly common throughout the C I P. Uh, it is a bit of an incentive, um, you know, recognizing that the municipality still, um, needs to collect some revenue. Those are, uh, again, modest amounts compared to some of the other things that, uh, are on offer for a C I P. Um, I think, uh, you know, the bigger ticket items are the ones that are going to really, uh, en- engage with those landowners trying to do, for example, the brownfield redevelopment. They're going to be much more interested to talk to you about, the tax increment financing approach, uh, and how that works into their feasibility. Uh, and the planning and building permitting fees are essentially a little bit of an icing on the cake in that regard.
Thanks. And so to get to pro- program one is your class C A, environmental assessments. Um, maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but it seems like you need to get program one, in order to get funding for the other programs. But if you've maxed out on program one, that you're no longer eligible for the other programs. How, how do those come together?
Uh, so, um, that while we talk about, uh, brownfields as if we know exactly what they are, there's actually a mechanism to confirm the contaminated status of, uh, property in Ontario. It's as, members of council may know. So we do need to do the phase one, which is the first historical research. Uh, that leads you to then an identification of further study, necessary. And then it's through that further study, once we actually, uh, take soil samples and confirm that there's contamination, that we're actually able to say, well, indeed, it looks like we have ourselves a real life brownfield site here. Um, and then once, um, that is the case, in, in a full fledged brownfield program, uh, we, uh, work with, uh, the developer applicant to move them through the process. And as they do the redevelopment, we actually then want them to participate and have access to those other funding programs as a package. So, you know, the tax increment, um, the, the, the fee rebates, and then the deferral of the development charges. And really give them a, a, in an ideal scenario, give them the fulsome, uh, suite of those programs.
So the maxing out program one isn't going to disqualify somebody from the remaining programs?
Uh, not at all. It's actually the, um, first entryway into the other programs that they need to get access to.
Is there a ceiling on funding under the brownfield program?
Uh, there's only ceilings that are set in terms of the rebates, uh, and then the other ceiling is the tax increment. So if it's a, a substantial brownfield site, uh, and they've done a very significant redevelopment, um, and, uh, the tax increment is significant. Um, and they're eligible for the fifty percent, then that could be a significant, um, uh, tax increment rebate. But I emphasize in that scenario, that is foregone revenue. So it's not money that you have to find and give them, uh, like some of the other programs. Facade rebate, you have to find that money, from your annual budget and give them. Tax increment, uh, you're giving them back money. So it's, it's a foregone revenue circumstance. Uh, hopefully that was helpful in answering that question.
Yeah, no, that, that helps me understand it. I think in practice, how I assume it'll work is that staff will come with the maximum amount as is, in past circumstances is how it's been. And then council's going to have to determine how much they can afford to give in that, uh, in that slate. I'd love to see a brownfield come forward. We haven't had one yet. Uh, for accessibility, um, I have concerns where we have a lot of new development going on. I'm really glad it applies to the whole town. But in new development, there, they have to build it to A O D A standards is my understanding. So I wouldn't want to be subsidizing, development that's already happening or already needs to happen a certain way. Are there any, um, are there any restrictions in this, in this policy that would prevent us from funding or, you know, stop funding from things that are already in the tubes and are already being built accessible?
Uh, I, I, I believe, you know, it exists in policy in terms of the whole concept of incentivizing things means that, um, the municipality is trying to encourage something to happen that wouldn't otherwise happen. And inherently in a C I P, that is the prevailing philosophy on, on all these incentive programs. So if someone says to you, well, uh, I, I, I put in an accessible, uh, doorway and there are a brand new building, and you speak to your chief building official and, and you say, well, aren't they supposed to be doing that anyway? And, and your C B O says, well, yes, they are, then you haven't, they haven't actually done anything over and above the minimum. Um, and then it begs the question, how, and therefore, why are you eligible for an incentive? Um, and I think, uh, you know, it's important to recognize that, uh, that exists. It, there has to be, um, this, this concept of partnership, they're doing more, uh, which allows you then to give them something in return for that public benefit.
Is that something that the language could be firmer on? I, because I just, I know in the past, we've got especially, um, w- with staff on the committee, staff's trying to walk a line of serving, uh, whoever's doing the development and economic development wants to support business. So there's that conflict of trying to give the maximum ask with getting the best value for the taxpayer. And then the, the committee and councils in an awkward spot. Um, is there any examples out there where that's been tweaked a little more?
Uh, you, you know, uh, I, my goal as a planner is, um, to try to help council sleep at night and many days. Uh, and if it is ultimately the desire of this council to make sure that that is made as explicit and plain, in this community improvement plan, then it would be my pleasure to make that edit in this document.
Awesome. That, I think would be great. Um, my last comment on accessibility is just the funding ceiling. I, I think it needs to be 10 times higher. If we look at the cost of installing a lift, you know, those are a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollar projects. Um, just putting ramps on challenging places in our downtown can be six figures, as we learned with our town hall renovation. I think it would be better to go higher on that one and then leave it up to the next council to decide what project's suitable. But if it takes a whole amendment to change it, uh, my, I'd be more comfortable if we went higher there for now. On housing affordability, these tools are a no brainer when we're working with a not for profit. But I've got serious concerns of when we're working with a, uh, for profit developer. What happens if in year eleven, the original tenant moves out and, um, eh, and that unit goes out to the market for rent? Is there anything that keeps that affordable? Or does it, do we lose that affordable unit at that point?
Uh, there's, um, a mechanism that, um, you could continue to use. Uh, and I think it, uh, is work that would be done towards a latter portion of the C I P's lifespan. Um, so here's how it, it would play out. So you've been able to attract a developer to your community who's a for profit developer. They've developed a blended housing, um, uh, uh, o- offering in the community. So it has, regular market units and some affordable or attainable housing units that are incentivized through the community improvement plan. And they've signed an agreement, which is a necessity, necessity in this particular circumstance, um, that they are going to continue to provide those as the, uh, as below market, uh, um, units. And they're going to participate with staff in the proper reporting and so on and so forth, so that they can gather the rebates. Um, the community improvement plan, as it's written, has a, a ten year lifespan, uh, as it relates to these programs. Um, so, uh, what will happen as you approach year eight or, or year nine of this, uh, arrangement with that developer, is, uh, a, a conversation. So we're going to be winding down this program. Uh, are you still going to be, uh, providing these as attainable? Or are you looking for us to continue to incentivize these? Uh, and I think there's something to be learned at the, the tail end of the life, the lifecycle. Now, if they say, um, uh, yeah, if you want me to continue to provide these as, uh, as attainable housing units, you're going to have to continue to pony up the dough. I think there's an important kind of conversation to be had, um, uh, with the council of the day. Uh, the policies and the goals of the municipality and whether or not you want to continue to do so. In which case, if you do come to that conclusion, uh, you either do a new C I P or you do an amendment to the one that you have. And you extend the perspective of the attainable housing program. And you allow that agreement that you have with that particular development and that developer to be renewed and for the incentive to continue. Um, and if, you know, the conversation goes a different way, then I suppose you'll have to adapt to that in, in the past your time. Um, but I do kind of see how that, uh, would track forward. And, um, again, I, I, I've given it some thought. So I'm able to share that perspective with you tonight.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to be, it's going to It's gonna be the future councils that have to decide it, but it's good to know that there's caveats there that we need to watch out for. With the carbon footprint stuff, I know with Merpanco, we got into it a bit. Um, I I like the idea of it in theory, but I'm really nervous of how it plays out. A heat pump could be a lot more impactful than new windows. Um. How are are there hard numbers um on what the minimum eligibility is gonna be for that?
Um, but I'll offer an answer, uh and if I if I didn't um. Uh, if I didn't clarify fully, please uh, you know, re-ask the question. Um. So we have windows and doors in there because we are aware of very hard numbers and you see the actual energy efficiency ratings. Written in explicitly in the C I P. Um, uh, eh, should there be a specific target that can be identified for? Uh, heat pumps, then um, you know, we could potentially incorporate it. I I know, for example. Um, the uh, the kind of baseline energy efficiency for a natural gas furnace these days for modern unit is roughly ninety-four to ninety-five percent. The super, super high efficiency natural gas furnaces are are ninety-eight percent. Um, and so like I can pinpoint that one as an example. Uh, and and ultimately, if it's council's desire to incorporate uh heat pump. Um, and um, for us to incorporate that as something that's in incentivizable. We'd simply need to be able to attach it to a very precise uh target to be met. Um, uh, so that uh, when reviewing an application, uh, members of staff in the committee can say, yes, indeed. They've incorporated the unit and they've achieved the energy efficiency, which is in the public interest. And therefore, they should be receiving uh the incentive and that's our recommendation to council, because we want to walk through those various checks and balances.
And adding and adjusting that isn't in the realm of something that needs an amendment. It's something that committee and. Future councils can decide as as those applications come forward.
Um, uh, it, I I think that will be on a case-by-case scenario. Uh, because we do have something that establishes energy efficiency. We have not spoken about heat pumps as a particular. Um, element that is um incentivizable. Uh, and you know, it would have to be. Something very substantial that does clearly in the interest of uh, you know, the broader community.
Good, thanks. Uh, so facades, we've got heritage, non-heritage. Um, parallel to this, we've been looking at and trying to get a heritage conservation district going. If the heritage conservation district was put on our downtown, would that make every building qualify as heritage under this plan by default?
Uh, I believe we've characterized it as a designated under the Heritage Act. So if you are in a. Uh, conservation district, I uh, that's not the intent of the policy. Uh, when I say designated under the Heritage Act. In plain and simple terms, to me, it means you have a plaque on the building that says you're actually heritage designated property. Um, so for me, that's a very simple kind of true or false test.
Okay, this is a big one for me because I'm thinking we've been sold the heritage conservation district as a way of preserving the character of our downtown. Without having to go through the individual, the process of designating individual buildings, property by property. Uh, so I'm worried that we're gonna have buildings that won't, we won't have very many buildings actually able to take advantage of it. And it's gonna create a bunch of uh paperwork and process for staff if we're trying to do this H C D plus. Maybe somebody wants to designate their building so they can get the full ass. Um, is this something maybe we can uh? I don't know, look into more or or try to expand that definition?
Uh, I'm certainly happy to receive direction from council and uh look into the nuance of a heritage conservation district and um. Uh, how in the circumstance that a heritage concert, just conservation district is in place. Um, uh, properties that fall within that district would be able to benefit similarly. Um, from properties that have a plaque on the front of the building, if um that is ultimately the intent of this council.
Okay, thanks a lot. Um. I, out of the things I've brought up, one is raising the accessibility limit, two is this heritage clarification. Is there consensus from the committee to give direction on either of those? I'll start with accessibility numbers. Seen uh nodding head, no from Peter, no from Jay. Lauren. I think it dies with Wendy there. Fifteen, thirty thousand dollars doesn't buy a lot of accessibility, so. The fact that we need to go through an amendment process, um. The biggest problem with the with the last round of C I P of having an impact was the ceiling on the grant, so. Um, but I don't see consensus, Councilor Alfred.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I I did have a couple of comments, uh, or you're gonna go ahead and. Run down the list of things that need, you you wish changed, or is there an opportunity here?
Did you have comments on the accessibility, raising the ceiling on that, or?
Yeah, I I I I I think not in it in it in particular, except as you've referenced it. But I think Rory gave an idea of how um. Of how in the initial stages of this brand-new C I P, um, I'm happy to go with that and and see, test this. Test and see what uh, what kind of take we've got on it. Um. I I certainly am a fan of. Uh, and again, I don't know at what point I'm gonna get my own comments in here, but uh in in terms of that. I I I'm not unhappy with the limits as they stand right now. Um, if there are limits, and I'm not even sure about heat pumps. Because I'm not sure what good a heat pump would do if you don't have good windows and doors. So I'm 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 happy to go ahead. With it the way that it is. If it requires amendment by a future council, well, look how much work we've done on this one. So I I'm I'm not unhappy right now with the limits that we've got, uh, not given all of the other. Uh, priorities we have. Um, and to say that we've turned this from a facade only into a multi. Directional policy, uh, I think it would. It would be wise to to take it for a run first.
Okay, uh, Senior Planner Greinke.
Thank you, I, Mister, uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Just to uh provide clarification, I reviewed the draft policy as it is. And it defines the designation as under part four of the Ontario Heritage Act. So that specifically refers to individual properties that are designated heritage, but not a heritage conservation district, which is addressed in in part five. So we'll, we'll look for council's direction on on whether that uh, that wording should be tweaked. Thank you.
Any comments on accessibility before we move on to heritage? Um, I think, I don't think you could put an accessible washroom in for thirty thousand dollars today, so. It's disappointing, but I think we're tied three-three. So on heritage, is there any interest in uh, Merpanco?
I I can appreciate uh the choice regarding limits. However, is there consensus that we would. Prioritize accessibility as well as the other items in year one?
Uh, Councilor Alfred.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I don't have, I don't have any objection to to um. Having it is, but I do think there is some responsibility for, particularly in the downtown core. We've known about this, that that the deadline for A O D A compliance has been stretched out now to twenty twenty-five. I I think that there are uh certainly, if we're talking about business, that it's in their own best interests. To um make sure that they are A O D A compliant, and they can take some of those steps earlier rather than later. Um, again, it's in their own best interests, because if more people can enter their store and purchase their wares, then. They're the better for it. So I I don't have any objection to putting A O D A considerations into the year one. But I also think there are some personal responsibility and accountability uh by particularly business owners. Um, to get ready for this.
And and they will pay half, if it, or more.
And and just to follow up on that, I don't know what they will be paying if we do nothing and eh the province decides to say. You're, it's all you on the business owner. So I think we are taking some steps to to certainly. Um, mitigate the problems that we have with accessibility and certainly in the downtown core by by introducing this. Um, this C I P for that reason. But it doesn't, for me, it doesn't mean that um. They take a risk in not doing something. Because I don't know what the province will will ultimately say and what deadline they will have uh to meet it and how much money they might have to spend to do it. So.
So, Sir Alfred, um, is there anybody that's against getting it a priority in year one? Uh, Councilor McKenna? Um, Council Brandon, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I I don't, I don't know that we need to make it a priority. As I said before, um, it's in there. Uh, we've taken steps to facilitate it. Uh, this is a province-wide thing, this dead deadline of twenty twenty-five. Uh, I could just imagine uh businesses scrambling and trying to do what they need to do. We're gonna be there for them uh to a certain extent. Uh, but uh, I agree with Councilor Alfred. I mean, they they. They they need to take steps as well. My suspicion is the province will will see what municipalities, what they're doing, what they're trying to do. And uh hopefully, there'll be some discretion with this date, but really, they they need to make themselves uh accessible. And uh, we're gonna help them do that. Uh, but uh, I I think that, you know. The crux of it is, the C I P that we have before us is an absolute positive step. And uh, I support what we have before us and and we'll go from there.
Good, thanks, Council Brandon. So the uh, with making it a priority, my my take on this is that uh, we haven't had. Uh, lineup of high-quality applications coming down the, you know, to town hall, trying to apply for this, rushing the applications in when things open up. Um, I think if if next year, if we got one really high-quality accessibility project. Or one really high-quality heritage project, or one, we know we've got some high-quality affordable housing projects coming through. Um, we need to fund whatever the best is. And if we turn on all the taps, I I don't see. Any downside to that, because it's ultimately gonna come up to staff and the committee. And the next council to figure out if it's good value for money and if it's where we want to spend it. So I don't know why we would. Say turn off the tap next year and then turn it on in two years, especially with A O D A coming down the. Down the line. Um, I'm not sure that I. I see Council McKenna and Council Brandon are against accessibility funding right now. Council McKenna?
Just to be clear, I'm not against accessibility or accessibility funding. Uh, I'm I'm in support of the full recommendation that Mr. Greinke in his report has put before us. Including the implementation guideline. It's a matter of staging this. We have a small staff. We have to roll this out. It is a new program. I'm trying to be practical. I would like much more uh. Effort to go on how we're going to uh implement uh and modernize the intake process. And the review process. How we actually do this is critical in the first year. So I'm just suggesting that we stage this carefully and properly. I'm supporting all of the uh areas under the C I P. And I'm just suggesting we stage them in the order that has been presented to us.
Thanks, Council McKenna. Council Alfred.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. That is a real concern of mine, and one of the questions I have written down is about staff capacity. Uh, these could be wildly popular, um, and. I don't know if that means at some point we will have just someone working on just applications for the C I P or that we will need that. So I I am reticent to turn all the taps on at once until we see how this is going to go. Um, I think Rory's advice to to start slow um is the right one.
Good, so I'm hearing uh a tie here, Merpanco.
Well, I guess if if there is, I can appreciate the comments, and I don't know what staff's capacity is implemented. Uh, and and why it's the stageless way, but if we were to um. If if any, I would suggest we defer Brownfield and Bar Mellet Site Assessment uh rebate program to year two. Uh, and move accessibility up if it's a matter of 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 consumer staff's capacity. Uh, understanding that um, the brown, we've had grant for brownfield in in the in the existing C I P, or the first C I P. Uh, I don't believe there's any any uptake at all with that. We do some brownfields in town, but um. They're usually a longer-term development plan, and I think if we had the program in place. And eventually may have one or two come forward, but it might take quite a while before we even get to that point. Knowing it's in the C I P may give some property owners the incentive to say, okay, I'm gonna come and look at it. But I think we have a more meaningful opportunity to create uh positive change in our communities for accessibility than through the brownfield, at least in year one.
Yeah, thanks, Merpanco. I agree. It's a first-come, first-served program, so the first that come get served, staff's capacity goes towards that. And if it's good value for money and it's going to give us what we're looking for in the program, it would get done. Um. So I would agree with that suggestion, Councilor Alfred.
Um, well, I I don't know. Some of the brownfields, and we have a recent uh recent example of it. One of the brownfields was used to ha- build attainable housing. So I'm not sure that I just agree with the mayor on that. There is the potential for other brownfields to do the same. And since it would be at the, the goal would be attainable housing, which is job one right now, as far as I can tell in in. On our agenda and in the agenda of the people that live in Smith Falls.
Thanks, Council Alfred. I, we think we're, we're starting to split hairs here. We're not in a big city where we've got a big demand for each of these programs. And and we gotta be really careful on how we turn on the taps, because we're gonna get inundated. Uh, we're really lucky if we get one good project in a year. And in past years, we've had to approve mediocre projects just to get that funding bucket spent. Um, I don't understand the discussion at this point, but I'm also not seeing a consensus, so uh. Uh, Senior Planner Greinke, did you have something to weigh in?
Sorry, Counselor, this was uh actually a a separate item I, based on on follow-up that I've just uh. Or a question that I just received from a a member of the public, actually, on on a separate issue. So perhaps. You can call upon me when we're uh, I guess, when when we've moved off uh off the current topic and and onto the next one.
Okay, um, so I'm I'm seeing three-three split for uh, for everything accessibility related. Um, so those won't go forward for adding part uh, Council Brandon?
Yeah, don't, don't characterize me as being a- against accessibility. That's not the case. So it's just not the case.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chair? Just do a straw vote of who wants to proceed with recommendations that have been made by staff or. Or not?
Uh, okay, do a straw vote on staff, which staff recommendation with accessibility?
Or in whole?
In whole. I think that. To not include part five of the heritage changes our whole strategy on on downtown architecture and and where we've prioritized and made investments. So I think that in itself is a a huge missed opportunity that um. That I'd like to hear from staff some more from before voting on it, but if the committee doesn't feel that way, the committee doesn't feel that way. Is there? Uh, Council Brandon, your hands up?
Yeah, we have a report before us, uh, the Community Improvement Plan Update, the final draft. We had a great presentation from uh. At a public meeting beforehand, and I think we should vote on that.
Okay, so.
As a whole.
Uh, we'll do a straw vote on the staff recommendation. Is uh somebody moving that recommendation? Council Brandon? The council passed a bylaw designating the entire boundary of the town of Smith Falls as a community improvement project area. And the council passed a bylaw adopting the Community Improvement Plan for Brownfield Development, facade and street shape improvements, accessibility and attainable housing. Pursuant to the authority under section twenty-eight, part four of the Planning Act. Is there a second around that?
Mr. Chair, we don't need to move her a second, or this is just a straw vote at this point in time.
But won't we need a motion from this committee to send forward?
No, it'd just be support as a whole from committee, the whole, and then it would go to council to be voted on officially. But this is just a straw vote to move it forward to council.
So I've read the recommendation. All those in favor of the recommendation, we'll take a straw vote. Uh, it's for, and uh, that carries. Okay, so that moves us on to, uh, thank you very much, Rory, for coming tonight. Uh, welcome back, Council Dwyer. Senior Planner Greinke, you have a final thought?
Sorry, I just uh, thank you, just the the question that uh, question that I received from the public and uh Rory's uh Rory's aware of it. And can speak to it as well is uh, on, is just looking for uh. Looking to for the definition of of attainability and differentiate from affordability and also question how the price. looking to, for the definition of, of attainability and differentiate from affordability and also question how the price point is defined, what data will be used, and will the information that feeds an attainable housing rental rate program be public information? So Rory is, uh, Rory's provided me an answer on that. And, uh, certainly I didn't invite him to share that for, uh, for, for the public record is as well as it relates to our attainable housing, uh, proposed attainable housing policy.
Uh, thanks, Carl. I'm happy to elaborate further. So one of the things that, uh, we found over the, um, recent housing crisis and the use of the terminology affordable housing is, uh, affordable housing continues to carry baggage with it. Um, although we say, uh, small A affordable housing, meaning, you know, uh, housing that a, a group of folks uh, can just simply afford, whether it's rental or, or market-based housing, gets confused with what is called capital A affordable housing, which is social housing, um, directly subsidized quota or government housing, public housing otherwise. Uh, and what has happened in, um, uh, the last few years is this word attainable housing has come forward. Uh, and it's being used to, to, um, uh, reduce the confusion around of affordable housing, small A, capital A, versus just good quality housing that's in the marketplace that, um, that, that folks can actually, uh, attain within their means. And so that's where the word attainable, um, has come from and when, while we see it in more common usage these days. Uh, it is important to acknowledge that in the Community Improvement Plan, uh, it is calibrated. So attainable housing is clearly calibrated as thirty percent of, um, uh, the housing cost for low and moderate, uh, household incomes in, uh, um, for the Community Improvement Plan. So we're still trying to create that very, um, uh, desperately needed kind of entry-level, uh, housing, whether or not, uh, it, and, uh, for that important segment, um, and, and to create certainty in their future. So, um, those are those two pieces and how they're connected together. And in terms of um, how staff would be able to, um, monitor the calculation of, uh, attainable housing, there are, uh, data sources as that release information on, uh, household income, specifically low and moderate income. Uh, CMHC monitors this as well as a, a number of, um, uh, uh, other reliable sources. Um, I can, uh, help point staff to some of that data since we're quite familiar with it. Um, and then, uh, it's not difficult to, to run that calculation, uh, for different types of, um, uh, units. For example, in a rental suite, you might have a studio suite, a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. So we, we kind of need to know what the, uh, attainable housing rate is for those types of suites so that, uh, developer can then respond and provide, um, suites at that particular rate. Um, and, and I'm happy to continue to support staff as they, uh, look to operationalize the CIP in this regard.
Thanks, sir. Rory, uh, Deputy Kirk Brennan?
So just to confirm, Mr. Chair, both bylaws are on the agenda for council tonight. Um, so they will come forward if that is directive.
Seems like that's the consensus thing. So, uh, we're going to rush them through. Uh, moving on to eight-point-two, if there's no other comments. Uh, Ms. Crowder, uh, Center Street Vision and Design Concept or Contract?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, uh, the report before you, um, is to seek council adoption for the execution of a service agreement with, uh, the proponent of the recent RFP for Center Street Visioning and Design Concept. Um, the revised revitalization of Center Street was identified as a strategic priority in the town's official plan. So staff developed an RFP to, uh, seek a consultant that can provide us with the first stage of the re- revitalization for Center Street. So I just wanted to reiterate that this is the first stage and it's intended to engage private landowners and the community to determine interest, feasibility and costs or for a full, a more fulsome planning project exercise that could happen in twenty twenty-three and, um, would be asked as part of the, uh, twenty twenty-three budget process. So this one is just specifically to get a design concept and visioning to help, uh, support a, a fuller, fulsome, um, master planning exercise. Um, the RFP received three submissions that ranged from twenty-two thousand to twenty-six thousand. The evaluation committee, uh, met and scored each evaluation to determine, um, the, um, best possible outcome for the proposal. So I included that. We had three, um, submissions, like I said, Conflux, Urban Strategies and Photon. In the end, Photon, uh, received the highest score and that was based on the project timeline being eight to nine weeks. Their knowledge, um, of the actual site, uh, recognizing that it was the former, um, area for Frost and Woods as well as their lower budget. I think the, the recommendation is, and the report is pretty self-explanatory. So I'll bring it up to questions if you have any.
Thanks, and Ms. Crowder. I'm seeing thumbs up. Uh, great. So we've got consensus for the, uh, Council Alfred question? Okay, then we've got consensus for the recommendation. Excellent, Julie.
Just checking, sorry, Mr. Chair, just to confirm, this item's not going to come forward till next, uh, next week, just so everyone's aware.
Excellent. Um, okay, so that'll move us on to, back to Senior Planner Greinke with lifting your part lot control Plan Twenty-Six and, Carol?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make this brief. Uh, we have another, uh, Parkview Homes, the, the developer of the Bellamy Farm subdivision has applied to, uh, lift part lot control under, under the Planning Act for one more block in the, uh, in the subdivision in order to accommodate the, uh, the sale and conveyance of, of each of these, uh, of, of the five townhouse blocks within that, uh, that property. So that, uh, the staff recommendation is that a, a bylaw to lift the part lot control provisions of the Planning Act be, be brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. I'm seeing thumbs up. No questions? Excellent. Now we're cruising. Uh, eight-point, uh, so you've got your direction, eight-point-four pedestrian crosswalks on Beckwood Street with Director McMon.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I'd like to advise the committee members this evening that I do have James Spokes here. Um, professional engineer from Morrison Hirschfield, who are the consultants on the Beckwood Street Phase Two redevelopment project. So I asked James to step in this evening just as, uh, the technical backup, I guess, uh, for this discussion about the, uh, crosswalks. Sorry, the concrete crosswalks that are to be, uh, installed on Beckwood Street Phase One and through Phase Two. So as we approach, um, final completion for Beckwood Street Phase Two, um, I felt it prudent that we circle back around to this conversation about the concrete crosswalks. I understand at the time, um, last, sorry, June of twenty twenty-one, Malcolm brought a report to council for consideration of the, uh, the finish, if you will, of the concrete crosswalks. And there was, from what I understand, great debate on, um, well, as I understand it, on, on not only the finishing of the crosswalks, but whether or not the crosswalks should be implemented into Beckwood Street for Phase One and Phase Two. As I understand it, there was a little bit of a split, split vote going on there and, um, the, uh, the result of that, that meeting was that the crosswalks would go, go in with a, uh, broom finish. Every second alternating panel would have a sandblasted detail. And that kind of leads us to where we are right now. So, um, that is all the crosswalks from, uh, sorry, right from, uh, through the limits of Phase One and Phase Two. As we know, Phase One, they were not implemented as part of that project just due to time of year for construction wrap-up. And, uh, it was deferred to, uh, Phase Two, which is being undertaken by Kavanaugh. So as we approached the, uh, you know, the completion of the second lift, or sorry, the final surface course lift for Beckwood Street, and prior to line, line painting, we would be, uh, we'd be implementing the crosswalks, uh. Right now Kavanaugh has advised that we'll, again, contingent on weather, we'd be looking at doing that work the week of the, uh, the seventeenth. So that's, uh, that's next week. So, like I said, I felt it prudent to bring this back to council because I have some concerns as Director of Public Works and Utilities. Obviously, uh, the streetscape of Beckwood Street right from Chambers all the way to Elmsley is, you know, this council, this council did a great job with implementing all the design features and accessibility features. And I think that's something to be extremely proud of for this community. Albeit, I have some concerns with, uh, with cutting the asphalt to implement concrete crosswalks. Um, you know, obviously, once we get surface course asphalt on, we've got a homogeneous surface right from one end to the other. And I have concerns with cutting that asphalt to implement, uh, or sorry, to introduce a different material into the cross-section of the roadway. My feeling is that, once we cut the asphalt and implement concrete, that we've given an opportunity to water to infiltrate that joint and, uh, potentially present some problems for us down the, the road. It might not be something that we see immediately, but I think over, over time, in the near future, we, uh, I mean, I mean, it's, it's, I'm, I'm suggesting that there, there could be some potential for some maintenance issues down the road. If I could, I just want to share my screen quickly here to show you a couple of examples of areas, um, not, not too, too terribly far away from us. What, can you see the screen with the, uh, the images on it? Yes, okay. So I'm going to bring up the, uh, the first image here. So this is in, uh, in Ottawa. And I'd asked, uh, Mitchell Clark from Parsons Engineering to, uh, to check with, with some of his colleagues around Ottawa, uh, to see what they're seeing down there. So there seems to be a bit of, uh, um, you know, from, from those that work in the operation side versus those that perhaps work in, uh, the design side, there seems to be a little bit of this back and forth with, uh, you know, the, the, uh, implementation of concrete crosswalks. So we talk about maintenance and durability and accessibility. Um, this first image that I have up here, I don't, I don't know that it's exactly the same intersection, but it, it kind of looks like it could be went through redevelopment, redevelopment at the Esso Gas Station. But I think what this one's trying to show is the accessibility component of the ladder marking, pavement markings versus, um, an implemented concrete crosswalk at, at this crossing. So in, in my, in my opinion, I would think that the ladder hatching painted marks on the asphalt does provide a lot more visual um, notification to primarily motorists that there is a crossing, uh, in the area. Then the next, um, image that I want to show you, here's one from, uh, give me two seconds here, sorry. From, from Ganon Aquway on King Street or Highway Two, uh, towards the west end of town. Um, this is one that was implemented a number of years ago, and you can see where there's some maintenance issues along the side. This particular stretch of road was milled and overlaid in, uh, twenty eighteen. And you can already see since then, I believe this Google Street View image is from twenty twenty-one. So you can already see some, uh, some pothole action adjacent to the concrete sidewalk starting to form. So that does present a maintenance issue going forward. And here's one on, on Young Street in Toronto, which is, you know, I, I guess the worst that any municipality could experience with a concrete crosswalk with heavy traffic. And I don't have anything to note as to when this was installed, but you know, could be something that we could, uh, we could see happen over, over, uh, an extended period of time. And then lastly, I took a couple of images, sorry, Google Street View images on the town of Perth, one of our neighbors. Uh, as we know, they have two, um, pedestrian crossover PXOs on Door Street, that was the one I showed you, then another one closer to Town Hall, uh, with the ladder hatching pavement markings. So again, this is down through a downtown core. Um, obviously, Door Street has not been reconstructed or rehabilitated in a number of years. So perhaps when the time comes, they'll be looking at doing something other than this painted crosswalk treatment. Who knows? So with that, that kind of outlines my concerns. My concern primarily is cutting the asphalt and, and introducing a different material that's going to react differently to load from traffic, from, uh, pre-saw cycles, uh, through the winter time and whatnot. Uh, so like I said, I felt it prudent just to have another discussion to see if there was an appetite to not put them in and simply, uh, leave the ladder hatching like we have through Phase One to carry that up through Phase Two. Through that, through the chair, I'd be happy to take questions. And like I said, I have James here, uh, that can provide some insight as well.
Great. Thanks, Director McMon. Uh, Council Dwyer, do you want to start things off?
Thank you. Um, thanks, Paul, for the explanation a- a- around the logistics of maintaining, um, the concrete. I, I get it. And, and I can appreciate having that seamless finish on, on the asphalt, not wanting to cut into it. I guess I lament, though, the fact that our vision for this downtown core has really kind of eroded away from, from what we were originally talking about to now. Um, and I'm just, I, I, I'm kind of at a loss. You know, this intersection was supposed to be something special. It was supposed to have something unique and, and be visually interesting. Um, you know, it provides a cross-section of two streets that are ninety-nine feet wide, like they're, they're, they're unique in, in Eastern Ontario, if not the entirety of Ontario, you know? And, and our vision was really to, to give that dominance as a, as a hub within our downtown core. And, and, you know, I can appreciate that there's, there's maintenance concerns. There's, there's always maintenance concerns. You know, the reason we don't have trees and a boulevard down the center of the street is because, you know, the fire department had concerns about a fire truck. And, and at some point, you know, the urban planner side of me is just screaming because I just want to say, you know, at, at what point do we say enough with maintenance concerns? And when do we start designing spaces that are creative? Um, you know, I think I'm really disappointed that this is where we've gotten. I, I fully appreciate your maintenance concerns. I really do, Paul. But I, I mean, we've got to do something that's not just a zebra crossing. Like, it, it's, it's just so far away from what we originally envisioned here. And with all of our other efforts to create, y- you know, public art downtown, I just, I, we've got it, there's got to be something else. Like, can we paint the zebra crossing so it looks like a, a railway crossing instead? I know we've already decided to put our rainbow crossing further up the street, um, which, you know, if we had known that this discussion was going to be had, perhaps it would have changed how we decided to allocate that resource, you know? So I just, I feel like things just keep getting put in front of us without, you know, contemplation of the full master vision. And, and I'm really disappointed. So I would like to see staff come back with a creative solution for something that is not just painting out a zebra crossing for these crosswalks and gives us a, a central intersection within our downtown that's, that's unique, unique to us and tells a story about the community because this is, this intersection is the heart of the town.
Sorry, uh, Director McMon, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, um, thank you, Council Dwyer, for your, your insight. And I, and I wasn't part of the, uh, I, I guess all the public consultation and everything for Phase One and or Phase Two. Um, just primarily based on when I started in September of last year. So, but I, but I do appreciate how this council got to where they are today. And, and I would agree. I mean, we, uh, you know, the, the concrete crosswalks will provide for something that's unique to, uh, downtown Smith Falls. Hundred percent. Uh, that's, that makes sense. Um, however, my, my, my interest is solely in maintenance and I don't, you know, if, 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 if this were something that I was looking at, maybe perhaps I would have looked for a different treatment. Um, maybe a, I don't know, stamped asphalt or something like that as opposed to cutting uh, the road through three lifts of asphalt to install concrete. I, I, I don't know that we're in a position, uh, based on it being October eleventh and uh, the concrete crosswalks are slated to go in next week, that we have a whole lot of time to reconsider something different unless we were to consider foregoing putting the concrete crosswalks in at this point and, and deferring until we come up with a different solution. But I would, through the chair, I, I, I'd be interested to hear from James in terms of, um, you know, the Antero Traffic Man- Manual and Provisions for Accessibility for Crosswalks, because it's my understanding that, you know, the ladder markings is kind of industry stand, standard for a crosswalk and for PXOs and the like. Um, so you can either go to James now, or I know Council Dwyer had her hand up there a second ago.
Council Dwyer, did you want to respond to that before we move on to the next one, or?
Yeah, thank you. It, yeah, I mean, I hear you. We did look at stamped asphalt. I think that was tinted stamped asphalt was the original recommendation. And then that got changed to the concrete for maintenance issues. They thought this had greater longevity. Like, I just, I feel like we're a victim of a constantly moving target, you know? And, and I think you're right. I think, you know, given the schedule of construction works this year, this is not going to be done this year. You might as well temporarily put the zebra crossing on and next council can decide whether or not they want to make this the priority. But I'm just, I am so at a loss, um, about this project from start to finish.
Thanks, Counselor Dwyer. Counselor Alfred?
Yeah, I don't feel dissimilar to Counselor Dwyer. I remember that last discussion as being extremely painful and taking a great deal of time. And the advice that we were provided with then is now, according to Director McMunn, and I'm assuming that Mr. Fuchs is going to back him up on that, that we are now what? So I I would prefer if we are trying to plan something different now, it would seem that we're being herded towards keeping the asphalt and doing ladder marks, ladder markings. Or we don't do anything and wait till the next council decides what they want to put in there next spring because we're running out of time now. So I I'm 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 fine with deferring it to the next council to decide whether or not they proceed with concrete sidewalks or not. But I I think this is, and I I am frustrated as well because we have talked about this before. James was there before when we talked about it. So I know you weren't, Paul, but it was an extensive and long and painful discussion then. So that's where I am, Mr. Chair. I would defer putting the concrete in until next council can decide. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Alfred. Director McMunn?
Yeah, just full disclosure, this was not something that was brought forward by Morrison Herschfield. This is something that I've that I've been grappling with for the last, you know, number of weeks, perhaps a month or so, as we were approaching these concrete crosswalks. There, the municipalities around like Ottawa and some of the larger centers that have instituted this type of application in the past, and this is all simply anecdotal just from bits and snippets of information I'm getting from either Parsons or Morrison Herschfield, some of the project managers from Morrison Herschfield that, you know, concrete crosswalks are implemented, and then over time, they 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 see issues. And yes, granted, they're they're looking at still applying concrete crosswalks in, you know, areas like downtown business areas within their communities. But on some of the outskirts areas, they're looking to different to different treatments. One of the other concerns for myself is this being, you know, a connecting link, Highway 15, heavy traffic over time. And again, this is just my personal feeling. It's it's like I don't want to have buyer's remorse here if we put these in and we have issues with them down the road. There has been talk of maintenance of the sandblasted panels that they will require just based to the heavy traffic going over those panels over and over again, that they will have to be re-sandblasted perhaps in five years' time to bring that finish back. And and like sanding a hardwood floor, you can only sand them so many times where you you know, and you don't have much left, and then you're into full replacement. So again, this is just information that's come up as of late. I'm not I'm not trying to suggest that council made a bad decision back in the day. But this is this is my feeling, and I felt prudent to bring it forward to as a director, bring it forward to you guys, how I feel about it. So James, did you have anything to add in terms of OTM and and, you know, what the best solution is at the end of the day for a for a crosswalk?
Yeah, in terms of the, I guess, the regulatory requirements, there's nothing that would would sort of be in favor of either concrete or painted. The one kind of specific requirement is the PXO, the pedestrian crossover halfway down the street, has to have has to have ladder markings, but that can be painted on a concrete crosswalk. That's a requirement from the Ministry of Transportation. The other crosswalks can simply be two white lines or concrete or ladder markings or anything in between. We did earlier on clarify with the Minister of Transportation that the colors of the ladder markings are not mandated, so rainbow crosswalks and so on are welcome. In terms of doing, you know, are there more unusual finishes on crosswalk? We'd have to look at them case by case. I I think my one comment here, I mean, I as I understand it, the point, the point of this this report is to just provide an opportunity for for discussion and debate to avoid the potential buyer's remorse. I completely understand the 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 objective of concrete crosswalks here. But this road carries high volumes of of heavy traffic. And as Paul says, it's inevitable that even though this is the the most robust kind of concrete crosswalk treatment that that we could propose, that there will be wear and tear on them over over time, more so than there would be on on plain asphalt. And the the maintenance to keep them looking in in, you know, great condition is much more complicated than than repainting ladder markings. But yeah, happy to answer kind of direct questions.
Thanks. Counselor Brennan, then Mayor Panko.
Let's run that. Yeah, I I think that at this point in time, just given this time of year, I would support just painting the crosswalk and leave it up to the next council to decide. I appreciate Director McMunn. He's he's felt a sense of responsibility to bring this to our attention. So we can discuss this, or whoever can discuss this next term and just get the street done now. And then we could talk about the cost involved and that sort of thing down the road. But at this point in time, go ahead and finish the street.
Thanks, Counselor Brennan. Mayor Panko, then Counselor McKenna.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's disappointing that we won't have the visual appeal we we had planned for. But Director McMunn, I appreciate, I guess, really having the courage to come back, come come tonight and tell us news we don't want to hear, because practically speaking, I think you're right. It will need some props down the road and potentially some buyers remorse. So I'll agree with Counselor Brennan and Counselor Alfred also said, let's just get, let's get it finished now. And the next council can determine what other option may be available come next spring for for making those intersections pop and then maybe add a little more life to them.
Mayor Panko, Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on Director McMunn's professional advice, I I'd be ready tonight to say, forget the concrete. But when my colleagues want to defer it till the next council, that's fine, too.
Good. So I'm hearing a consensus to to defer. I definitely share the frustration with this one. I was wondering one question. This will save us some money if we defer it. Could we use the money we've saved to put a pedestrian crossing at William Street that that we didn't do in the past to save money and traffic?
Yeah, I would say it's it's certainly an opportunity to do so, albeit we are seeing significant lead times with, you know, light posts and masks and whatnot. And we've got stuff on, sorry, lighting ordered for the for the town park project, and the lead time on that is 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 months. So not likely even see those lights go in this, sorry, before the end of the year, probably be next spring before they're actually installed on the basis. Would you tend to agree with that, James, from your end? We would have to look at a solar application, I presume, for William Street if we were to even consider it, given the fact we would need electrical, but solar could be an option.
I think that's good for what we need to know. This is, you can defer it, good for the next council. Things to look forward to for the the new group. Any last questions, comments before we move on? Not seeing any. Okay, thanks a lot for joining us tonight, James and Paul. One thing I just wanted to get for the clarification on from the committee. We received the report from Scott Reed at the beginning. He gave us two motions to suggest, there was a suggestion that staff come back with a report. But in my mind, we've got the information we need. Is there any consensus from the committee to have staff prepare a report for next week? Or do we have what we need to make a decision? Counselor Brennan?
I'm ready to decide, but I think we have a window of opportunity. So the committee, I think, needs some comfort in in what they want to pass for for a motion. But I think it's very important that we do pass a motion and make sure that Mr. Reed has that in hand when he presents to the Electoral Commission. So I think we can do that probably next week, and let's get that done.
Great. So we won't have to, staff won't have to rush a report or anything for us. Excellent. So with that, we're out of business, thankfully. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Counselor Dwyer, seconded by Counselor Brennan, the committee adjourned its proceedings at 7:53 PM. Instead, so adjourned until the next duly called committee meeting. All those in favor? So that is carried. So we have a council meeting coming up after a quick break.
Okay, I do have the movers for the council meeting. So bylaw seven point one will be with Counselor McGuire. Bylaw seven point two is with Counselor Brennan. Bylaw seven point three is with Counselor Alfred. Bylaw seven point four is with Counselor McKenna. And item eight point one will not be brought forward tonight.
And the notice of adjournment, maybe?
Oh, sorry, notice of adjournment is, oh, I haven't, Counselor Allen has left, actually. She won't be coming back. So Counselor Dwyer, can you do that?
Yeah, for sure. Chris, you want to sign that?
And Nadine, what is seven point four? I'm looking at my agenda. It's not.
CIP.
The revised one I sent out, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
CIP adoption.
You said it separately, or it's in the, is it on Speak Up Smith Falls now?
Yes, she she should have updated that. Yeah.
All right, okay.
Okay, Chris, you have a second there?
Part lock control. Nikki, you want it?
Hey.
Chris, do you have your explanation for what that means?
It's a part of the wonderful development of Bellamy Farms and procedural, and we probably going to do one a week from now for forever.
Separate separating property lines, or I guess identifying property lines for separate units, right?
Yeah, you're severing, you're severing the parcel to legally create lots.
James?
We are still live. I'll just make everyone aware we are still live.
Yeah. Nikki?
Nikki, great. Wendy? Your hand going around, but isn't any words coming out?
Counselor McKenna, you want to do that community improvement plan for Smith Falls?
Yes, I'm still looking for that report.
And then Peter, your second, or will be Wendy?
Sure.
Peter, I could text it to you. Do you want me to text it to you?
I'm hoping.
Are you having trouble accessing Speak Up Smith Falls?
No, no, I'm there.
Okay.
It's finding that particular CIP bylaw.
It's the very bottom of page two.
Peter, I'll run you over an agenda right now.
Okay, are we, while you're doing that, are we, can we have two minutes for? I've got to stand up for a little while. Can you not, we got like.
Let's go.
We done in ten.
Mayor Panko, can you just give me two seconds? I'm just running this agenda over to you.
Okay. Wendy, you need to?
It's okay. There's no Jays game on tonight.
Tough day, wasn't it?
We don't speak about it anymore.
For the record books for the wrong reasons.
Call them the blue leaves.
I did. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Thanks.
The Maple Jays.
Yes. They've spread their bad luck far and wide. Okay, we see Nadine get back here and we'll.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm set to go. All right, Mayor Panko, we are ready to go live for the council meeting. You may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back to at least Special Meeting of Smith Falls Town Council for October 11th. On October 11th, 2022, we acknowledge that the sacred land which Smith Falls is now located has been a site of human activity for over 10,000 years and has rich an indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and ancestral territory of the Algonquin Anishinaabe Nation. We are grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order we might be here today. We're also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in making Rita Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile all our relations. Together, may we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship and being mindful of generations to come. From a call we need to order, I have no announcements myself this evening. Unless for disclosure of monetary interest, yes, Counselor Dwyer?
Thank you, Mayor Panko. I'll have two items, seven point three and seven point four. I'll have to declare on both. They both pertain to the CIP, which has been completed by Dylan Consultants. I have currently retained Dylan Consultants to do an almost identical project in the town of Carlton Place.
Thank you. We have no delegations. We have no option of minutes. And a report this evening? I see none. When we move right into our formal business, Counselor McGuire, you have the first bylaw.
At your worship, move by myself, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to let part lock control provisions respecting lands described as block three of registered plan 27M dash 102 be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. Move by Counselor McGuire and seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to let part lock control provisions respecting lands described as block three of registered plan 27M dash 102 be received read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? Let's carry discussion, please, Counselor McGuire.
This is severing the parcels to legally create the lots that exist in this part of town in the Bellamy Farm subdivision.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Maybe a third reading, please.
Move by myself and seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to lift part lock control provisions respecting lands described as block three of registered plan 27M dash 102 be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed and numbered 10383-2022.
Thank you. Move by Counselor McGuire and seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to let part lock control provisions respecting lands described as block three of registered plan 27M dash 102 be now read a third time, finally passed, signed, sealed and numbered 10383-2022. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Counselor Brennan, you have the next bylaw?
Thank you. Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to adopt a procedural bylaw for the town of Smith Falls be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. Move by Counselor Brennan and seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to adopt a procedural bylaw for the town of Smith Falls be received read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? Thank you. Discussion, Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, well, I think that probably in all my time on council, I've never spent so much time on a bylaw. The procedural bylaw is very important. I'll just note that the public notice was provided in in September to the EMC. We had no feedback. However, I'll just review the number of times this council has worked on this bylaw. We had six reports, May 24th, 2022, June 13th, 2022, July 25th, 2022, August 22nd, 2022, September 12th, 2022, and September, another report on the same day, September 22nd. And this this bylaw reflects how we run our meetings of council and how how things go here. And I think that that the work that we've done and staff, I want to really salute them on taking input and and coming back with solid proposals is going to streamline our council meetings. It's going to make us more transparent. And it's exhaustive. And so congratulations to my colleagues and the staff for getting through this. And I'll just mention as well, staff wanted me to mention that some of the upcoming dates we have coming up. On November 15th will be the inaugural meeting of our new council. Well, the new council will be doing some training in November and December 2022, and January and February. The implementation of the new bylaw and all appropriate modules of eScribe in camera and live stream, the bylaw will take it back in early 2023. And the eScribe means that people will be able to watch our meetings, and they'll be able to watch them after the fact and actually pick out parts of the meetings that they want to watch and pick out parts of the meetings that they want to watch. And, uh, so we have a hybrid, uh, component to it as well. So, uh, congratulations to everybody on this. It's, it's the first time, I think, that in my time on council, this bylaw has been revisited. It's, it's really a non-abus thing. So congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Brennan. Any further comment? May I have a third reading, please?
Yes. Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to adopt the procedural bylaw for the town of Smith Falls be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed and numbered one oh three eighty-four twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. It's moved by Counselor Brennan and seconded by Counselor Dwyer. That a bylaw to adopt a procedural bylaw for the town of Smith Falls be now read a third time, it's like pass, signed, sealed and numbered one zero three eight four dash two thousand twenty-two. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Alfred, you're up next.
Thank you, your worship. And, um, just a question before I start because the procedural bylaw was not on the agenda that I printed out earlier this morning. So seven point three still for one oh three eight five dash twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Thank you. Then move by myself, seconded by Counselor McKenna. That a bylaw to adopt a community improvement plan for the town of Smith Falls be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, my, my agenda's a little bit different here, but move by Counselor Alfred, seconded by Counselor McKenna. And I asked you to repeat that again, Counselor Alfred, I'll, so I can repeat it, my, my mistake.
Just sorry, Ms., sorry, Mayor Panko, just to confirm a minute, revised agenda was sent out earlier today. So we are now on seven point three bylaw to designate the entire boundary of the town of Smith Falls as a community improvement project area. And that's now by law, one zero three five dash twenty twenty-two.
That's what I have.
Is that the one I'm doing or am I doing the bylaw that does the entire boundary?
The entire boundary.
Yeah. Okay, trying to keep up here. Uh, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McKenna. Uh, that a bylaw to designate the entire boundary of the town of Smith Falls as a community improvement project area be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. Move by Counselor Alfred and seconded by Counselor McKenna, that a bylaw to designate the entire boundary of town of Smith Falls as a community improvement project area be received or in a first time, taken as read a second time. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Discussion, please?
Uh, this is part of, uh, I presume the next one is also going to speak to this. This, we had a, a community improvement plan that was mostly centered around downtown and for facade improvements. This is, adds a whole suite of other things that have to do with accessibility, uh, climate and attainable housing. So it, it's exhaustive. It's a suite of things that council in the future now will utilize to encourage people to take steps on all three of those fronts as well as the one that we had before, uh, with the downtown waterfront as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a third reading, please.
Thank you. Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor McKenna, that a bylaw to designate the entire boundary of this town of Smith Falls as a community improvement project area be now read a third time and finally pass, signed, sealed and numbered one zero three eight four dash twenty twenty-two.
Five dash twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. It is move by Counselor Alfred and seconded by Counselor McKenna, that a bylaw to designate the entire the boundary of the town of Smith Falls as a community improvement project area. Be now with a third time and finally pass, signed, sealed and numbered one zero three eight five dash two thousand twenty-two. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And Counselor McKenna, you have the final bylaw.
Thank you, your worship. Move by myself and seconded by Counselor Alfred, that a bylaw to adopt a community improvement plan for the town of Smith Falls be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. It is move by Counselor McKenna and seconded by Counselor Alfred. That a bylaw to adopt a community improvement plan for the town of Smith Falls be received or in a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Discussion, please?
Yes, uh, as Counselor Alfred mentioned, this is a, uh, an upgrade to our former community improvement plan. Dylan Consultants, uh, won the bid to do this work for us. There were community consultations, community surveys. Prior to this, at five o'clock tonight, we held a public meeting specifically on the community improvement plan. And as been mentioned, it covers areas. It, what it is, is really the town would like to see our community move in certain directions. And we provided a series of incentives, uh, specific to brownfield development, the downtown and waterfront area revitalization, universal accessibility and attainable housing. So the town and our community have a, a large interest in these areas. And the town has created a policy framework to, um, provide funding uh, for private and public sector to, to advance these goals of the town.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Counselor McGuire?
Thanks, your worship. I'd like to have a recorded vote on this tonight. Uh, very disappointed that this is being rushed through public meeting, back-to-back committee, the whole back-to-back council meeting. Uh, thank God the public didn't show up to the meeting tonight because I think it shows we had no intention of taking anything they could have brought to the table for granted. Further to that, this hasn't been vetted by the Accessibility Advisory Committee. It hasn't, the final draft hasn't been vetted by the CIP Committee. Hasn't been shown to the MHC Committee for discussion and we didn't get any feedback for that. Uh, my lived experience on this committee, I'm the only member of this committee that's been there since day one. Um, that there's holes in this plan. It doesn't account for all the problems and to amend this plan is a significant undertaking, not just for cost, for staff time, for public consultation, for going, so we've gone through all these hoops, we've dragged this out. This plan's three years overdue, just to rush it through in the last, uh, couple of weeks. I'm extremely disappointed with the loopholes and the, the, the small things that could have made this plan better. For example, it shifts our whole focus on municipal heritage. We have been going Heritage Conservation District because it gives staff the tool to look at the downtown as a whole. Unfortunately, this community improvement plan just looks at designated buildings in a certain area. Uh, I can only think of a couple of buildings that aren't publicly owned that, that will qualify. So, so, so that whole section that's been written up is a section, is essentially ineffective. Um, I don't understand why, uh, we're putting limits on accessibility. Uh, for thirty thousand dollars, it really limits the kind of impact that our accessibility projects are going to be able to have. And the fact that it's not a priority in the first year, I think says it's not a priority for our council and I'm disappointed by that. Um, these things weren't a big issue and, and this thing didn't need to be passed tonight, but, uh, unfortunately, we're pushing this through for for reasons I don't understand. So I won't be voting for this tonight and I'm disappointed this is how this project's going to end for our council.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, um, I'll ask for the third reading, please.
Yes, uh, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Alfred, that a bylaw to adopt a community improvement plan for the town of Smith Falls be now read a third time and finally passed, signed and sealed and numbered one zero three eight six dash two zero two-two.
Thank you. It is move by Counselor McKenna and seconded by Counselor Alfred. That a bylaw to adopt a community improvement plan for the town of Smith Falls be now with a third time, finally pass, signed, sealed and numbered one zero three eight six dash two thousand twenty-two. A recorded vote has been requested.
With respect to bylaw one zero three eight six dash zero dash twenty twenty-two, please state yea or nay. Mayor Panko?
Yea.
Counselor Alfred?
Uh, yea.
Counselor Brennan?
Yea.
Counselor Dwyer has declared on this item. Counselor McGuire?
Nay.
And Counselor McKenna?
Yea.
This motion is carried.
Thank you. Okay, um, item eight point one was removed from our agenda. Requires your announcements. Counselor Brennan?
I just want to remind my council colleagues that you have until October twentieth to submit your pumpkin to the Heritage House Museum for the annual, new annual council pumpkin contest. So October twentieth, so get your coverage together.
Thank you. Motion for adjournment. Welcome back, Counselor Dwyer. You're here to see us off.
My favorite order in this. Move by myself and seconded by, uh, I think we said Counselor McGuire. That the council adjourn its proceedings at eight eleven and stand so adjourned until the next duly called meeting of council.
Thank you. Move by Counselor Dwyer and seconded by Counselor McGuire. This journals, this council adjourns proceedings at eight eleven PM, stands so adjourned to the next.